City of Troy Planning Commission Meeting. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve their community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's legal department and our planning consultant Carlisle Wartman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the podium unrecognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. And at this time, I ask the Planning Commission Secretary to conduct the roll call.
Ms. Malala Hawley? Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krant?
Here.
Ms. Prakis?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Mr. Buechner?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we'll do the approval of the agenda. Mr. Fox?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Mr. Tagle, seconds. I think we're ready for roll call. Mr. Buechner?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Ms. Prakis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Next up are the approval of the minutes from the April 23, 2024 meeting. Does anyone?
So moved.
Mr. Lambert, a second. Mr. Buechner? Any discussion? Seeing none, I think we're ready for roll call. Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Buechner?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Ms. Prakis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
All right, now we're up for public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. If anyone's here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, you can step forward now and sign in.
Do you want to sign in for a question there?
Yes, please. You'll be allowed three minutes, and we'll keep time right here, so it'll, the yellow light will indicate one minute left, and then, right here, yep. We won't start it until you've introduced yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Manisha Shablon. I've been a resident of Troy since 2002, that's when I got married, and this is the only place in the United States that I've stayed, and the only place in the United States that I want to stay. We recently moved to the new Monsoon subdivision on Waddles and John R., and this is one of the best subdivisions here on the unit, most of our subdivisions. So just, I can't give a lie. And so both subdivisions are just premium. It's not a hundred K subdivision. It is upwards of a hundred K subdivision. And now we are--
That they're going to build an apartment complex near it, and it's not on the agenda, and that's why I want to speak about it. We don't want apartments complexes near that. Apartment complex, we're talking about people who are not permanent. It's okay to have a house there. You want to build houses, fine. Apartment complex, we will have people come in and out, and then, on the other side of our subdivision is the Bogarnard School, so whoever lives in the apartment has to go through our subdivision. That means there will be 50 families who are going through. Are we sure we want to do that? And then, please, 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 whoever's the road person or traffic person here, stand on Waddles and John R. Waddles is a single-lane road with no sidewalks. Students go into Athens twice a day, in the morning and the afternoon. I think we need sidewalks. We don't need apartments there. It's already a pain, unless you're a rash driver, to get out of our subdivision, because Waddles being a single-lane road, if you want to go. And now, if you're going to build new apartments over there, this is a traffic nightmare. Already, I feel as if in our subdivision, the entrance to our subdivision should have been more towards the Boys and Girls Club, because we are so close to the signal that by the time we want to enter, people are slowing down, so we don't get that opportunity to, you know, go past the five lanes and go. So really, traffic point of view, the kind of public who are going to come point of view, I don't think that's the right place. I mean, otherwise, there are people who are paying 800 K to come and live in our subdivision. There's a reason why they're doing that. It's such a beautiful subdivision, trees. Right now, if I had the picture, I would show you, there are long trees, tall trees, taller than the usual our houses, and that will go, and I will see concrete over there. And then, these concretes will, on the other side of concrete, will be non, what do you call it, the transitional population. It's okay to have houses there, but not that, please. Please, 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 come to our subdivision, spend some time there, you will know. You cannot destroy that subdivision, please, 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 please. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for a public comment for items not on the agenda? Go ahead and sign in.
I'm homeowner 2172 East Waddles Road. I spoke last time when this was a surprise to many, many people, and I thought it was going to be postponed for tonight, and obviously, it's not on the agenda. My concern is the trees and the sidewalk that is currently in place there on the border of the property from Rite Aid down to Wayfair Street. I asked the slides to be shown last time, because I wanted to see what the property development had envisioned, and of course, it was flat, with not one single tree anywhere. My, my question is, if a tree survived the sidewalk the first time and did not get cut down, and it's on the city property between the sidewalk and Waddles Road, does this developer who's going to buy the lot have the right to cut those trees down also? Because there's two of them between the corner of John R. and Waddles down to Wayfair. And there's many pine trees. This is just, other than it being a swamp when it rains for about a week, it's a very nice wooded lot, and it's not invasive trees. And I just agree with the previous speaker that shoving 54 apartments in there, that some will be below ground level, is, is not a good thing for our part of Troy. Thank you.
Is anyone else here for items that are not on tonight's agenda?
My name is Ravi. I'm from the same subdivision as Manisha G., and, you know, we are represent, we are like, none of our neighbors here to represent and explain about the same concern. We heard the previous presentation from the notes. We went through the entire recording, and the new apartment complex, it was talked about how the parking lot is provided, and how many entrances and everything, but where there was no talk about what is the impact to neighbors at all. And, you know, like she said, we all invested in those properties for a reason, and having 58 apartments, you know, with, with no, you know, separator to the neighboring houses which are worth 800, 900 K is not a good sign for the city. And, like I said, you know, we all moved from different, different places to that subdivision for a reason, and having apartments next to that is not a good idea. So we want you to seriously consider what it means, and then, give us an opportunity to kind of express our disinterest in that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything for an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, that will conclude our public comment section. We're going to move on to our first public hearing for tonight. It's a special use approval and preliminary site plan review, SUJPLN 2024-0010. It's the proposed Motor City Church addition and site improvements. It's on the south side of Waddles, east of Coolidge. The address is 1349 West Waddles, Section 20, currently zoned R1B, which is one-family residential zoning district. Yes, Mr. Tagle?
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from this item, excuse me, because our company is working for Motor City Church, so.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, Mr. Carlisle, we're ready for your presentation.
All right, great. Thank you. Good evening to the planning commission, the public. Tonight before you is a proposed expansion of existing church. It's located on Waddles Road. Subject site is a little less than four acres in area, and as is noted, it does contain a two-story church, parking lot, detention basins, and open space. The site is currently zoned R1B, in which places of worship do require a special use approval. The site plan is laid out in front of you. The proposal is to build two separate additions to the existing building. They're outlined in blue. The larger one is approximately 7,000 square feet. It's on the front end of the building, so I, north is skewed here, Waddles is on the left, but it's, it's north on the site plan. And then, the smaller 700-square-foot addition is located on the east side of the existing building. In total, the building would be increased to about 19,900 square feet in building footprint. In addition to accommodate the proposed additions, the applicant has expanded the parking lot by 45 spaces and moving it closer to Waddles. The parking lot expansion is outlined there in yellow, and again, this does comply with all R1B requirements. Currently, the access to the sites, if everyone looks at the screen behind you, is, is in this general location. Working with the engineering department, as well as the road commission, they have been asked to move the entrance to the center of the site on Waddles, so they're relocating the, the site. In addition, their, site access, in addition, there's a few proposed improvements to Waddles Road that's going to be required, including increasing it from two to four lanes in that section, as well as putting in some turning lanes as well. In addition, the applicant has proposed to increase pedestrian access by building an eight-foot-wide sidewalk along Waddles, as well as an additional six-foot sidewalk that will run the length of their development along the property line to take you from Waddles Road all the way into the building itself. So how we treat places of worship is we base the parking requirement on the size of sanctuary. We don't, we don't account for or require to park all the accessory uses, such as classrooms and any, any other type of uses. So based on the size of the sanctuary, they're required to provide 121 spaces. They're providing 160 spaces, and the reason that they explain that is they need additional parking for volunteers and musicians and other staff members that will, will also be there at the same time as people that go to the church as well. So they're asking for a parking relief to add these additional approximately 39 spaces. Our ordinance does allow for increase in parking up to over 20% with approval by the, by the planning commission, so that's a point of discussion tonight with the city, with the, with the planning commission. They're adding a significant number of landscaping additions to the site. This includes building landscaping, parking lot landscaping, additional screening where the new parking lot is located. We do note that all landscaping does comply, however, they are short one of the required parking lot trees. It's located, they have the right number, though they have one that's outside of the parking lot, and again, that could be a waiver granted by the planning commission. The applicant has provided a number of renderings. The Motor City Church sign, that section is existing, and the new addition is that white part that you see to the right of that sign. This is what you'd see from the parking lot. Again, a different view of that same rendering, looking more at the corner of the addition. This is a little more close-up of the addition. This is a more front-on view of the addition. And then, this is the addition on the, smaller addition on the east side of the building that's about 700 square feet. So again, materials are, and design matches the other addition on the front of the building. This is a special use, so there are special use standards that the planning commission should consider, as well as part of the public comment tonight at the public hearing. And there are site plan standards the planning commission should consider with regards to this project. So our recommendation is that we are asking the planning commission to hold a public hearing and consider public testimony. If the planning commission does approve the special use of preliminary site plan, we recommend the following conditions be addressed: review of the excess parking, as well as review of the one parking lot tree along the perimeter. Again, these are two waivers that the planning commission can grant as part of site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Yep, Mr. Fox?
Just so I know, for future reference, so they already received a special approval to build an R1B as a church. So is it that every time a church that's in R1B makes any alterations to their building, they have to come back to the planning commission?
Yeah, so if you're a special use, you already have a special use. If you expand that special use, add increased activity, increase the size of the building, increase parking lot, you're required to come back and amend that special use permit. So it is not just to churches or places of worship, it's to any special use. If you expand it, you have to get a new special use approval.
Does anyone else have any questions? Yep, Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Carlisle, this may be a typo, but I just wanted to clarify, on page eight of your, your report, under special use approval standards, it talks about this as being a neighborhood node. I assume that's a typo, because it's not in the neighborhood node.
Yeah, I apologize, that would be a typo, it's not in the neighborhood, it's R1B.
Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant up, if they're here.
My name is Michelle Sargent. I'm with John Tagle Associates. Address is 309 North Main Street, Suite 213 Royal Oak. I'm here with Pastor Dave Martin from Motor City Church, and we're here to answer any questions, additional questions you have. The main intent here, though, is, as you can see, we're looking to improve the site from what it is. That includes parking, that's in pretty poor shape right now. Relocating that curb cut to come in, so it's further away from that west property line by the subdivision curb cut, and then improve, obviously, the landscape and building areas of the, of the site. There is an existing retention pond in the back that will be expanded, based on calculations with expanding the building footprint. So, other than that, if I, I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Pastor Martin.
Yep, Mr. Hudson?
It's a little off-point, but I travel Waddles Road about six days a week, going east and west. There used to be a residence to the east of your property. It looks like it was demolished, turned out. Did you by any chance purchase that for an expansion?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Fox?
Well, I, I will just ask, so based on the presentation, there's one tree that hypothetically needs to be moved into the parking lot, and you guys are overparked by about 40 spaces. Was any thought brought into shifting that tree into one of the parking spaces?
We could talk about that. We, honestly, when we looked at the plan, the one tree happens to be up on the, it'd be the southeast, right next to the new patio, and so we placed the tree, it's, to us, it was basically kind of like an island. It's right there at the asphalt curb, so it was kind of a, for the parking lot and the, and the patio. So we placed it there. We'd like to keep it there, but we can talk about it if there's objections to it.
Yep, Mr. Buechner?
Did you guys talk to the residents on your boarding, that are nearby?
Have you talked to any?
We've, we've met a few of them, and we have a couple that go to our, that's in our church now, that live in the neighborhood. That's how we first found out about the property, but we didn't go door-to-door with the neighbors now. We had talked to a few that seemed to be excited about the fact that we're keeping it a church, and it's not becoming something else.
That was my other comment, and I'm just a fan of, of churches in general, so.
Me too.
I have a question about the two phases, or there's a phase one anyway, and then a master plan. Can you talk us a little bit about the timeline that you have for those two phases?
You want to address that?
Yeah, the, the first phase is, of course, the existing building remodeling, and then going ahead and doing the parking and all that. The second phase will be more of a children's youth kind of wing to add on. The timeline, hopefully, we want it, we need to get into as soon as we can, because of where we are, the timeline we have there, but I would hope within a year to two years. Of course, it all depends on growth and finances and all that, but that would be our goal, as soon as we can get in there to begin to, to move forward the project to the next phase.
Okay. And do you have any intention of using it as a daycare, or is it just going to be used on Sundays primarily?
Yeah, it'd just be used on Sundays primarily, no daycare or anything like that during the week.
Okay.
And, and it's, you know, as soon as we can get an extra $5 million, if anyone, we'd be glad to go ahead and do the whole thing. It looks beautiful, the whole thing, so.
Yeah.
As soon as possible is our goal.
Okay, sounds good. I, I'm just thinking about the neighbors in terms of, like, lighting up that whole parking lot throughout the week when, when no one's going to be using it. I'm hoping that the lights are on timers, and you won't be lighting up the whole place all the time. Is that the idea?
Yes.
Just whatever is necessary with the lights.
For safety, yeah.
Yeah, when they need to be on at night or whatever.
Okay. And one other question I had was the location of the dumpster. It seemed very awkward and unfortunate, actually, because it's such a beautiful new facade, and it's really blocking the front of the church, and I just wondered if we could consider moving that?
We looked extensively at that, actually. Right now, there is no enclosure. They just have the dumpster out in the parking lot. On the east side, we have the patio. We don't want the dumpster over there. But not only that, that whole east side is in utility easement. On the west side, where we have put it, we're actually going to be bringing in a new storm sewer along that west edge, so we have to, we can't put it too far to the west. We've put it basically as far west and south as we could go with everything that we've looked at, as far as, like I said, utilities, trying to cut down on how much hard surface and concrete we add, or asphalt that we add. So is it in the most ideal location? No, but we've just, you know, we've tried to, and we will design it to hopefully be not an eyesore, because obviously, people are going to be walking by it, we don't want that either. But as far as location, we feel it's honestly the best location with the, what we're working with, with the site.
Okay. I mean, maybe it's not as practical, but even just bringing it north, just away from the, the entrance.
The, yeah.
I don't know. Because I think about the smell as well, but.
Yeah, honestly, they're not going to have a lot of garbage, and it's not like, you know, hopefully, it's not like a restaurant and stuff, where there's like, you know, there's, there won't be, hopefully, smells of that type of stuff in it, so. But yeah, I mean, we, we can talk internally a little bit more, but it's, that location in that vicinity is where we feel is the best location for it, with everything going on on the site.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Lambert?
It, it looks like the neighbors should be relatively happy, because you're increasing the, the buffer around there, so they aren't going to be looking at as much as they are now. Pastor, tell me about the numbers of additional parking spots, and what exactly you're going to do there. It sounds like from Mr. Carlisle's report, mostly musicians and volunteers?
Yeah, we have volunteers, of course, that, that will be in the nurseries, and the children's ministries, and youth ministries, that add up to quite a bit, that aren't in the auditorium, that are still there, that, that are serving and helping in different areas. So we were just trying to make additions, so that we had what we needed for the auditorium, but then also had the space available, so that they weren't struggling or figuring out where to, to park, so just to enclose all that in one.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up if there's anybody here who wants to comment. All right, seeing no one coming up. Oh, come on up, please. Just go ahead and sign in first, and then state your name. We won't start the three minutes till you introduce yourself.
I reside at 4083 Penrose Court, which is in the Woodlands of Troy subdivision, immediately north of the property, on the, on the north side of Waddles Road. And if, on maybe the previous slide, it talked about the, the widening of, of Waddles Road. Could you, could you scan to that? to that? There we are. We're increasing the size of Waddles Road to make it four lanes, but there's, and perhaps there's other material that I did not review. For what length is that widening going to occur? Is there going to be a center turn lane? And are, is sewer construction affected? I mean, what is the scope of the widening of Waddles Road and for what length?
Ultimately, this is, the walls and this section is on the jurisdiction of the Road Commission, so this is going to be permitted and approved as part of the Road Commission review of the project. My understanding is that they are not widening the physical infrastructure of Waddles. They're restriping within the existing configuration. I don't know the exact length of how far it is from each side of this driveway, but in addition, they are going to put a D cell lane in on Waddles Road as well. But in terms of changes to Waddles Road, I think it's more of a striping than anything else with regards to this project.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, first of all, thank you. It's my first visit. I'm new to U.S., so probably some of the terminology, which I will use, you might not understand, but I will explain. It's a blessing that we purchased a house just behind the Stone Heaven Church, you know? Because in India, we say that if your back is covered by God and if you have blessings of elders, you are good to go. So, good to know that, earlier I thought, because I received this particular letter about the property, I thought that maybe an apartment complex is coming here, so great. And I also met the pastor here. My question is, there are two questions, basically. First is from Waddles. Will it have a clear view of the church? There is no, because I think you asked that question, or you asked that question, from Waddles, will it have the whole view of the current building, or?
So, they're, they're, I'm sorry.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, sir, you have three minutes. You're at two minutes now. Why don't you ask your question? I'm not trying to run the meeting, but make your comments, ask your questions, then we can answer after your comments.
Yeah, so this was my one, the first question, and my second question was basically, is there going to be any kind of construction behind the church? So, these are the two questions I have.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and have the planning department address those.
Okay. So, right now, for Waddles Road, you get a pretty clear view of the church from Waddles Road. The additions are bumping out approximately, I think it's about 60 feet, out from the existing facade. The distance from Waddles Road is a couple hundred feet from Waddles Road to where the new addition is going to be, so it's a pretty far distance. In addition, they're adding a number of landscaping islands that don't exist now. So, the facade from Waddles Road will be broken up with more trees, but it will be visible from Waddles Road in the future. With regards to construction behind, there's no proposed construction behind the existing building now, other than improving and widening or enlarging the existing detention pond, but no other building additions or improvements on the backside of the building.
I think they did talk about putting a playground in the back, but that's probably not considered a building.
Not a building.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this, and I'm going to turn it back to the Planning Commission for discussion. Yep.
Just wanted a clarification. Where is that one tree that they would like counted that isn't counted?
Yeah, I guess, when you count parking lot trees, there's a little bit up to the discretion of the counter. So, they may have counted it differently than I did. This tree right here is the one that they want to keep, that I did not count in the parking lot. It's parking lot adjacent. We honestly don't have a concern if you want to give them that waiver to grant that tree, but it's up to the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Is there a place that you can see where an additional tree could go? Because I know they want that tree there because of their patio, but.
I don't see one, other than having to take out parking and putting in an island somewhere else, because all the other islands already have trees in them. And even where they have a little bump out, we count those towards the parking lot trees. I don't see any open ones that they could put another tree in without having to physically make an island within the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. So, I know we've got to talk about the tree, and also, we should, yeah, talk about the fact that it's overparked, although, after hearing the explanation, I'm, I believe I'm comfortable with it. They're already improving the parking lot with landscaping. It's going to be much improved from what it looks like now. And because of its location on Waddles, there really is no other option for parishioners. And what's going to happen is the volunteers are going to show up first, and then I imagine no pastor would want anyone to be turned away from a service because they couldn't find parking. So, and we don't want people to be parking in the neighboring neighborhoods, you know, because of a lack of parking. So, I'm personally comfortable with it, but of course, I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks.
I'm fine with it.
Substantial improvement over the existing building, so I'm fine with it as well.
Mr. Fox?
I'd like to offer a motion. Resolve that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed church addition and other site improvements, south side of Waddles, east of Coolidge, 1349 West Waddles, Section 20, currently zoned R1B, one-family residential district, be granted, subject to, well, we wouldn't need to subject it. We just grant those. So, yeah, be granted.
Okay, do I have a second?
Before.
Boy, a lot of people excited about doing that.
Mr. Lambert?
Question for Mr. Savin. Do we need to explicitly say we're giving a waiver on the parking lot tree and the excess parking?
I think it would be helpful for the record.
Okay. I'll second the motion as long as Mr. Fox is willing to accept those two waivers in there, so.
Amendment accepted.
Okay, so we have a second. Any discussion? All right, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Frakis?
Yes. That passes unanimously. I think we can call Mr. Tagle back in. I don't know if he can hear us. All right. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, special use and preliminary site plan review, JPLN 2021-24. It's a proposed Starbucks with the drive-through, north side of Big Beaver, west of John R. Address is 1735 East Big Beaver, Section 23, currently zoned community business, zoning district. I just introduced the, I just introduced the Starbucks, and as Mr. Tagle makes his way back to his seat, you can get ready to go.
异议.
Oh.
Darkness.
The proposal tonight is to relocate the existing Starbucks that's located in the Troy Sports Center shopping area to the now-closed bank drive-through of the Chase Building that fronts on Big Beaver. Coffee shops are permitted use in the zoning district. However, drive-throughs are a special use, and the site plan approval would transfer the existing Starbucks to a more visible location along Big Beaver. So, the existing Starbucks, this is Big Beaver, John R. The existing Starbucks is located in this kind of corner of the site. They're going to move it to the, again, now vacant Chase Building and Drive-Thru. So, the physical building itself is not being expanded. However, they're making significant facade improvements. They are relocating the existing drive-through from, well, extending it really from the side of the building to the rear of the building. They're adding a front patio. They're making significant landscape improvements, and they're relocating the trash dumpster location. With regards to parking, we know, when we look at these sites, we look at the totality of parking for the entire center. And so, there are three other tenants in the site. They are required 68 parking spaces based on their uses. On the physical site itself, outlined in red, they're providing 47 spaces. We do note that this center and the Troy Sports Center are all owned under the same ownership, and there is sufficient parking for daily use in the Troy Sports Center. So, we do note that, we do not have a concerted parking. We think parking is sufficient overall for the entire site when taken to totality. However, we do note that if one of the parcels are sold to another entity, there would be a private, parking agreement would have to be required and reviewed by the city in the future. With regards to access and circulation, the primary access to the site really remains the same. However, they, we do note that they have relocated or extended the drive-through to wrap around the backside of the building. That's what that red line is. One of the concerns that we raised and had lengthy discussion with the applicant was with regards to pedestrian access. Right now, in the rear of the building, you can walk right from the parking lot to get to the rear of the building, where there's some access to the rear to some of those tenants. But in order to access the building from both the rear, as well as the west side of the parking area, you'd have to cross over the drive-through. What the applicant has come up with are a number of striped crossings across the drive aisle to indicate pedestrian access. And we just were having some discussion if there should be some additional improvements to those, including perhaps raised crosswalks instead of striped crosswalks, signage, or some other pedestrian means, really to safely move people from the rear parking lot and the west parking lot to the building. The applicant has added additional landscaping. They have provided eight of the required 18 parking lot trees. We note that only two of those eight are within the parking lot itself. We do also note, in addition, though, that adding additional parking lot trees would require significant removal of existing parking on this particular site, as there's no place to put trees without taking out parking. However, we do note, again, similar to the last request, Planning Commission can consider alternative locations along the perimeter or other locations on site to accommodate those parking lot trees. The applicant did note that they are preparing a photometric plan. It has not been finalized, but it will be required as part of final site plan approval if this does move forward. The elevations include significant facade improvements. The materials are proposed are stucco, which is that white material, a composite wood siding, which are those brown colors, aluminum store, front bronze window, as well as metal bollards to protect the drive-through. Again, the colors seem to be a mix of white, dark, bronze, and gray. In front of you is the rear elevation and the left side elevation. That's the drive-through pickup window. So, the rear elevation is what fronts the backside of the site back of Big Beaver. And this is the front elevation that would front on Big Beaver. The applicant is adding a significant amount of transparency and glass to the front elevation to give it, to add some light and vibrancy. And right above where the front elevation part of that text is, is where the proposed patio would go, next to the drive-through. This is a special use. There are seven standards the Planning Commission shall consider. In addition, there are site plan design review standards. One thing I do want to note, and that there was an error in our report that noted the Big Beaver design requirements, this is not the Big Beaver district, so those are not required, but the applicant did appear to meet many of those requirements through all the transparency and glass they did add. So, we support the relocation of Starbucks, and we'd provide a more visible location along Big Beaver. As part of the discussion, the Planning Commission should consider the following. First, the compliance with special use standards. Two, the compliance with site plan review standards. Three, compliance with safe pedestrian access. And four, parking lot tree location. If the Planning Commission does approve the special use of the site plan, we recommend that the applicant provide a photometric plan for final site plan approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Yep, Mr. Fox?
Well, so just on the topic of trees, as the applicant's deficient, 10 of 18, we have shared parking agreements. This applicant owns this entire, like, block on the corner. I guess I'm just curious, do we have any type of leeway in the ordinance that would allow him to plant trees on other properties that are connected to this in order to try to make up that deficit?
Or the perimeter of it, or something like that?
Yeah, just trying to think of.
It's a, it's a, it's a unique request. It's unique because they're owned under the same ownership. We wouldn't necessarily want to do a horse trading.
Sure.
As a precedent between two different sites. You know, I'd encourage the applicant to put as many trees on their site as they can. I guess we'd have to think about that, Mr. Fox, to be honest with you, if we allow it. But again, I, we'd push for more, if the applicant can't put more trees in the parking area itself, we would encourage as much landscaping on the perimeter as they could put on this particular site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krenn?
You mentioned the crosswalks that cross the drive-through. You mentioned raised, what is that? I mean, is it like a speed bump, or?
It's a little bit, it's more like the call speed table, but it's not as high as, but it just, it's a, it's a physical reminder for a car that this is a different area where pedestrians are going. It also raises the pedestrian a little higher so there's a scene a little bit more. But you can fit them within the standard crossing, cross stripe, a typical striped crosswalk. This will raise it six inches, maybe less than six inches total.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Carlisle, or should we invite the applicant up? All right, we're ready for the applicant to come if they have something to present.
So, good evening. Jim Baller with PEA Group, address is 1849 Pond Run, Auburn Hills, Michigan, 48326.
And I'm Dennis Bostic at 1819 East Big Beaver with the Troy Sports Center.
Good evening. I'm Brian Neuper, 259 East Frank Street. I just, I just moved in Birmingham.
Yes, thank you for hearing our petition this evening. I think Brent and Ben did a good job explaining what we were proposing. There were a good discussion regarding pedestrian crossings. When we initially submitted the project, we came back in and added and embellished a lot of the crossing areas because we know that both the front, the side, and the rear of this building are accessible. I think we can handle that with a couple of things, either some signage, potentially showing those are crossings, defining those significantly. We have striping in there, and the anticipation is to have significant striping, not just a simple stripe, but a fairly wide stripe to designate that that is a crossing area. We could also change the material in there, because right now it's asphalt. We could potentially put concrete in there to kind of make that very distinct that that is a crossing. Related to the trees, the two parking lot trees, we could put those in, but unfortunately, as Mr. Carlisle pointed out, we'd have to cut out some islands in there, and we'd prefer not to do that. But if it's the will of this commission to do that, we'll do that. I know one other item that came up in Mr. Carlisle's letter is related to the bike rack. Currently, the bike rack is, if you look at the diagrams, all the way to the right-hand side. There is a sidewalk connection from Big Beaver going back, and we thought that was a logical position for that, to be more utilized by the entire center and not just for Starbucks. So, that's why that was placed in that location. But if you have any questions of me from design, the architect from his perspective, or the owner, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Beekner?
So, obviously, trees are on the agenda here for us to discuss. And I'm not a landscape guy, but I've done a few things. From what, and that's the perfect picture that I wanted to see. I see that there could be some places to add some trees, but I'm not the landscape guy. So, would you guys be willing to add some trees, maybe on the perimeter or other places that would make it more green?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, there are locations. I don't want to spend Mr. Bostic's money, but there are locations. We can certainly, yeah, there are, as you point out, there are some spots. We could do some filling them.
And I agree. I don't think we want to go over here with them. Somewhere there would be my recommendation, because I think we don't want to cut too many corners for everybody's best interest, my opinion. The second thing was the crosswalks. My experience with that, with winter and darkness, I think signage is smart. I think raised might be smart. I've dealt with snow. I've dealt with snow plowing as well. I know you guys are thinking about all of it, but I just, I've, I've been at that place for almost as long as Mr. Bostic has, but it's such a great spot. I mean, just, you got a lot of people moving around, important customers, and I just think delineating that well would be well done. I hope you guys would do that.
Yep, Mr. Fox.
I guess what are your guys' thoughts on raising the crosswalks as opposed to just striping them?
The preference would be the sign and have, have striping. The tables, while they come up, they become a little bit of an issue when you start doing snow plowing.
And also, I've noticed that whenever you have raised, where my condominium is, the main road has got the raised, people just go flying after they go over that to get to the next one. And I don't think it's a good idea personally to have them raised up.
Mr. Faizan?
Just a question. So can you describe what the signage would look like?
I think you've seen those at crosswalks, where you have the pedestrian signs with the arrow, and he'll just pedestrian crossing.
And so you would put one of those at every one of those striped?
I mean, prefer, I'm sorry, Mr. Faizan, I don't mean to cut you off. Preferably, the one at the northeast corner is probably the most imperative one there. The one at the back corner there is more related to just access for the back-of-house operations from those businesses. We can certainly do it. It's no big deal to add those signage, but the critical one is at the northeast corner. Because it guides people from the more, the intent is to guide people to those spots. So there is a sidewalk along that east side of that building that takes people to the front of the building. There's also a back patio behind Tropical Smoothie, so there's a back door there.
Yeah, I may have missed, I thought there were more than just that, that one at the northeast corner. I thought there was another one that was further west.
There is another one that is farther west in the middle.
There's one here, one here, one here, and I.
I thought there was one in the side, yeah.
And there is one.
I couldn't tell from the plans if that was supposed to be striped or not.
It can be. That is mainly just for the purpose of access to the dumpster for Starbucks.
Okay, so the main one is the north, the northeast one.
Northeast one is where we would like the direct traffic. No real opposition if both of those need to be, we're fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Beekner?
Obviously, I see where the Starbucks is. What else is in the other building? The rest of that building? Is there something going on there currently? So I know where Starbucks is, the rest of the building, what's in there right now?
The occupants.
Occupied the rest of the building?
Who is it?
Smash Burger. With which ones?
Smash Burger in there. There's Tropical Smoothie on the end, and we have a new medical spa going in where the mattress store was.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lambert?
The, the drive-up lane there, what kind of a barrier is along that drive-up lane so that people don't try to cut in there?
It's a raised concrete island.
Okay.
Six inches high.
You got to put some kind of signage on there so that people don't try to drive over accidentally, or is it high enough people?
It's high enough. It's a curb, it's a standard curb height, and I think probably with some of those pedestrian signs that we're talking about, will slow down traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I think it's a great idea to move the Starbucks up. I think it makes sense to be on Big Beaver and utilizing the already existing drive-through seems like a great idea. I did have a question about the dumpster. It looks like it ate up 10 parking spots. It's a huge area, lots of concrete around it, and it's in a pretty awkward area. I don't know why it's not pushed off completely to the west side of the property, sort of out of the way. Is that a possibility? And then regain some of that parking?
Those power lines are there, aren't they?
Pardon me?
Those are those power lines?
Yeah, there are power lines, yeah. That's right.
There are power lines on that west property line where those parking spaces are. So if they raise up, they can, may have an issue.
Oh, really?
Yes. And they're pretty low.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a reason why it's off to the angle and taking up so much space? I mean.
Access. I mean, you got a truck that needs 40 foot to turn in. If I turn that thing 90 degrees, it'll only have 24 feet. It's just the accessibility.
All right. I, the, the other issue I have with the, with the location here is just access management in general. When I look at the northern part of the building, where the drive-through is going to run across, you know, it's going to run towards the west. If you're coming in off Big Beaver and you turn onto that unnamed road, which is the way you would enter to get to the Starbucks, and then you want to turn left into the Starbucks lane, right north of that is two-way traffic coming in and out that's separated essentially by, you know, a six-inch curb. So really, there's an area where you've got traffic going into a, into a drive-through lane, coming out onto a street and going into a street. And I don't believe that, that's safe, and I don't believe that it makes very good with the circulation. I also have concerns, you know, we're going to be looking next at a, the development where we're going to be adding over 100 units of people, and we're talking about having them be spit out into this area. And as an overall concept, I'm having a hard time understanding where all these cars are going because at the end of the day, it's not a road. We're spitting these people out into a parking lot, and let's say they want to go to the Starbucks. I don't even know how they'd get there. I don't even know how they'd get onto Big Beaver. They're going to come all the way to the Starbucks and, and turn right to get out right when all these people are coming into the, to the Starbucks lane? I, I have concerns about the overall access management on this site that I, I'm having a hard time reconciling.
I can only address the Starbucks issue at this point.
Yep.
Initially, if you can go back, Ben, to the site plan or whatever, that's fine. Initially, we looked at that northeast corner. We extended that curb to the north such that you would have, you'd maintain that two-way traffic, and then you'd get into the drive-through. There was a concern raised by the traffic people that that wasn't a good idea. So we ended up just truncating that and having it straight. We can go back to having that nose, it just comes, so you, you maintain the two-way traffic, right? And then you would come in to the drive-through. So you wouldn't have, what you say, the one, one-way, one, one-way, and this way. So we can do that, but we were, it was suggested not to do that. I'm not opposed to it. I get your point. I mean, the only other way, I was just thinking about that while we were discussing, maybe extending that nose out even farther could, could solve that problem, too. Because you got an area, because you're right, you have traffic. If you're coming out and you've got cars coming in this way, there's a lot of area between where that nose isn't and when the drive-through lane is. Maybe extending that nose out farther will make a better channelization of traffic instead of having that wider space for movements.
The, the nose is the, the curb?
The curb, yes.
That's, that's ending short of the actual.
The more channelized people. I wouldn't suggest align it with the no-name street. Push it back six feet from where that is to the west.
Brent and Ben have an idea over there. I'm just petting.
I'm just listening.
Do you have any thoughts on the, the nose?
I can, I can just back up, Jim, that there's been some, Mr., sorry, Mr. Butler, that there's been some, some back and forth regarding, regarding this application specifically to the queuing for the window.
Do you have thoughts on how it should go?
I'm not, I'm not a civil engineer, I'm not a traffic expert, but there's, there does seem to be some merit in, in drawing that, drawing that, what'd you call it, a nose?
A nose.
A nose further to the, the east.
I think Mr. Tagle had to.
Yeah, I was actually, what I was going to say was, why couldn't that nose be brought further down to delineate that one-way traffic? Because there is a lot of, a lot of traffic movements right in that area. You've got two ways going north-south, east-west, you've got the, the road or the drive. So there's a lot of congestion or potential congestion there, depending on time of day, I'm sure. But I think extending that nose, as you call it, down, and quite honestly, I mean, when I look at the location of that crosswalk, where are the people coming from to cross over? They're, they're, they're in a drive aisle quite a bit of the time before they get to the striped area to cross the inbound drive-in lane. I guess I'm not sure, you know, I'd solve that. I understand you might, I heard your explanation as to where you wanted that, but if that was moved to the west to align with the striped area, that's.
That's sort of got landscape, a non-landscaped island?
Yeah. I, I don't know if that, that would certainly, to me, make a little bit more sense. It starts to delineate a pathway for a pedestrian coming from the north to cross over. But I, but I like the suggestion of extending the nose for sure.
Well, the one thing that could be accomplished by the extension of that nose is kind of doing just that, creating them coming in this way, going, because we have that pathway, the existing sidewalk there, that's a natural channelization. If we dump them into the patio, that's where that goes into the patio for Tropical Smoothie. We could maybe come in and turn and then turn back down if we extend that nose out.
You know, almost even suggest some type, whatever you're delineating these crosswalks with, whether it's signage or striping, that also occur on the north side of the nosing, you know, so it, so, so people can, you know, again, traffic coming from two directions in two different ways would at least give them recognition that this is a pedestrian crosswalk here.
Yeah, they'd be double-sided.
I mean, there are a few other things that, that you could think about. For example, that curb that's, that's creating your drive-through, on the north side of that curb, you could put angled parking spots and not have it be a road right there. Move the, push the road north and have it be a one-way, either going east or west. And then really think about having another roadway out onto the unnamed road because, like I said, the circulation in general. Ben, could you put up the, like, an aerial?
Yeah, but in doing that, you would relocate that, the cross drive that's there would be out of line with the other one, wouldn't you?
So, so when I look at this aerial of the entire complex, I feel like it needs a new vision in terms of circulation and patterns because so much is changing within this complex, and I don't know that the X, the, the circulation is really serving the, the tenants who are there anymore, especially with this addition. I still don't know how, you know, the, the impact of the, of the, what's going to be coming in the north in terms of residential spitting into the parking lot, and the only, the only place for them to exit is right there by the Starbucks in the opposite direction of the incoming drive-through. That's the only exit right now. So, or they're going to be flying outside, you know, around the, wrapping around the Starbucks and driving in front of it to get out to Big Beaver. So I know we're not discussing that other thing right now, but even without that, I'm having trouble with the circulation patterns surrounding the, the Starbucks. And I think you got to step back and take a bigger look at, at what's going on and, and propose something that's going to make sense for the future of that, that area with the four tenants. Because right now, there's only one there. It's just the Tropical Smoothie. I mean, Smash Burger is still open, but it's going to be a lot more hectic and busy, which is, of course, what you want, and you want it to be bustling and have people. But I don't feel like the current situation right now is going to be able to handle that, that traffic flow.
The Chase Bank had four drive-throughs, never had any issues with traffic patterns or, you know, they, this is only going to have one.
My guess is a Starbucks and a bank have very different traffic.
Well, they have, they had four, for, for some reason, they had four drive-through spots, and they were quite busy in their day, but I don't know of any issues with that, and I'm not sure that Starbucks is only going to have one, but, but I agree, they do back out more.
Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I got a thought.
Yeah, go ahead.
This, we talked about this, this curb nose coming, I'm a little unsure without a drawing in front of me, what does that look like?
Can I borrow a laser pointer?
Yeah.
Okay, so the option would be to take this, push it out here.
Oh, I see, okay.
Or what we had previously shown was creating this, an island there, and people would enter, you'd maintain inbound, outbound, right? And then people would come in and do this to go through the drive-through.
And that was?
More of a channelization device.
Yeah, and, and that's the one some traffic person said he didn't like, that second option?
Well, there was, there was discussion early on, we, our initial submittal had this, and the thought, there was discussion that that was a little, from a traffic perspective, a little too much for someone to ask, to do. Come in, make that turn that quickly.
I see.
Again, we're not talking high-speed here, right?
I understand. That's fine, thank you. The other, the other part of that is, you know, the entrance to the front of the store, these stores, I, I've been at that, you know, I went to Smash Burger, and it's not bad, but you're, I, I didn't, I don't know if it was a crowded day or not, but when you're coming off of Big Beaver, you've got to immediately turn left into that front parking area, which for me, it wasn't an issue, but if people are backed up getting out from all those new apartments, coming out that way, that's my concern. They won't be able to turn left into that, you know. Again, these are two separate issues. I know this is the one you're working on here, but I'm concerned what's going to happen next with those, you know, traffic building up to turn onto Big Beaver in that no-name road. And I don't know how you can handle that any better than what it is already, but it's just, to me, it seems like another, and what, maybe it only happens three, three days a whole year that that happens, and that person will just have to go up and turn around and come back. But, but it just, it's very congested, that's all I'm saying. It just kind of, there's no solution I can see right here, but it just, it's just not a smooth, just like Ms. Parakis was saying, it just, it's, looks a little complicated during heavy traffic, not during, you know, let's say, 80, 90% of the time, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, you know, during normal operations, you don't have an issue.
Right.
At that certain time where you do have congestion, yeah.
Because it's an immediate turn right then turn left.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, I mean, I still haven't figured out, the people who are using the skating rink or the people who are going to be living in the, in the residential area, if they want to go to Starbucks and they want to use the drive-through because they're on their way to work, the only way I can see them going is coming around, passing in front, going out onto the unnamed road and coming back to get into the line to go. They can't come in from the back way. And people driving east also cannot enter the drive-through. They have to go in front of the Starbucks, exit out and come back in.
Because I'm not following that.
I'm not seeing that. Try again.
Give me a rail.
So, so anyone at the skate rink, right? Or, or, or living in the back who want to go to Starbucks?
Okay, so there's skating, right?
Yeah, but, but I mean, they're parked on the other side of the road, and the, the only way to exit, when you, when you, when you're driving north towards the skate rink on the unnamed road, you can take a left to turn into the parking lot, right?
Correct.
And it's one-way. Based on the way the striped of the parking, it's one-way going west.
This way?
Yeah, but I'm talking about all the way up by the, yeah, I'm talking about up there. So all the people using all that parking, anyone from there, they, they can't exit out that way.
They can go back down this way?
Right, but, but is there an exit there, or do they have to come up to the exit by the Starbucks plaza?
I don't know.
I guess, I guess that's my point. There, there, that's the road that you come in, and there's no break in the pavement. The only way out is just north of the plaza.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying now.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. I was driving over there, and there's a lot of concrete everywhere, and there's, there's, to me, the circulation in that area is not ideal. So if you want to get a cup of coffee, you got to go in front of the Starbucks, exit out onto the road, go back and get into the line.
You mean, you're expecting they will drive all the way in front of the building and then out to the road, what you call the unnamed road? and then out to the road, what you call the unnamed road? And then go back into line? I suppose if they want to, they could come from the other direction as well. They don't have to go all the way around the building.
What other direction?
They could come from the north to the south to get into the drive-through lane. Or they may just park out there and walk it. I don't know. Everybody...
So in front of the ice rink, when you're heading north on the road and you take a left right there, take a left, yep, you can't come out that way. It's one-way.
Yeah, but you can come around this way, come down that way and go in that way.
But how do you get into the, how do you get into the line of the Starbucks?
Well, the way I had it designed.
Right, but we just talked about extending the nose, right? So I guess that's my point.
Was your concern.
That's my point, though, that for me, the circulation doesn't make sense. I mean, you haven't brought us a plan to show us how it works. I'm not convinced that it works. That's just my opinion.
I'm convinced that it works, that's the way we designed it. We could do that. For that particular, for that particular movement you're talking, the way it's designed today can work. That nose is pushed far enough back that people could enter into the drive-through if they wanted to.
Right, and they're coming...
If we push it, we can't. Yeah, if they're coming this way, right? This is all head-in parking here. There's a drive aisle right here. They could come in and go into the drive-through here.
Right, and they're crossing across area where people are coming and going. I feel like it's a circulation... I feel like it's a little bit dangerous, I guess. And you also have the crosswalk very close by as well.
I appreciate your concerns.
Yeah. Mr. Lambert?
I was going to say, I'd like to see your alternative plan because I think, at least as a layman, it seems to make more sense because it reduces some of the confusion about, well, am I turning into the drive-through or am I driving into the rest of the parking lot and see what that looks like? And also whoever on city staff, see why they think that was a bad plan so that we could kind of have an opportunity as a commission to see what the alternative is.
I agree.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We didn't do a public hearing yet, right? Okay, we're going to open it up for a public hearing. If anyone's here who wishes to speak on this, now is the time to approach. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. And it'll, we'll turn it back to Planning Commission discussion. Yep, Mr. Fox.
I guess just a bit of a question for city staff. Could we get some clarification on the, like, what exactly happened in terms of what reconfigured the drive-through? Like, was it a city staff member? Was it someone from, like, I don't think it would be the road commission, but I don't know. Like, I guess where did that conversation originate?
I'm trying to think if it was an internal staff member or our consultant. I don't recall. Remember, there's a lot of, there's a lot of applications on the board that we're processing at the same time and a lot of challenges, design issues with every application. So I'm having a difficult time remembering exactly who made the comment and when it was made. But it's, but what we, just to give the planning commission some background on how, kind of how the sausage is made, we get an application, we get two hard copies, one PDF. We take the PDF, we input it into a program called BSNA, which is a project management program. It gets circulated, it goes to various departments, DPW, attorney, in some cases, engineering, assessing, et cetera. We get those comments back, we provide those comments to the petitioner, they make appropriate changes. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts at the same time, given all the projects we have.
So I guess my general comment then to the commission as a whole is, I put a lot of credit with our traffic folks on city staff. And I mean, if they reviewed this, again, I don't know who on city staff or the consultant or whomever, but if they reviewed this and they didn't bring up an issue with the circulation, like, I understand the thought. I mean, I feel like we've all spent a lot of time in that parking lot. Sometimes it can, you know, back up, but at a point, if nobody on city staff caught it, I'm not sure if it's something that I'm personally super concerned about.
Anybody else? Yep, Mr. Beekner.
Some of us think you guys know the answer to every question in life, so...
You'd be mistaken.
And I get, I think, I agree with Tyler that I think we need to figure out that area because it's not just a little bit dangerous, it could be a big bit dangerous. And I think we're responsible to make sure this is done well. Their responsible city council will keep it safe, too. So I guess I'd hope for more detail on that to understand. And I've been in their shoes where they're like, someone from traffic told me to do it this way. So together, we've got to figure that out as a group for them so that we can all see it better. And I'd like to see the trees added on it also.
Any other comments? Yeah.
I guess just to echo Mr. Beekner's point, yeah, I think the trees. My question earlier was more just out of, you know, sheer curiosity in terms of tree placements with the budding parcels owned by the same owner. In general, I would like to see the ten trees that are deficient being added back into the plan.
There's a lot of brain power right here that isn't seeing anything, guys.
Mr. Coe?
Yeah, I'll add. You know, what I would like to see is a, some kind of a real visual block between the existing parking lot to the north of this Starbucks building. And that would involve realistic, and by realistically eliminating, I guess without a pointer, I can't really say this, but it's the first lane of parking north of the drive-through lane, taking that entire, all those parking spots out and making the, that was a five-foot raised concrete curb, making that wide enough to handle some trees so that, so that the trees really create a definite, this is no longer parking here, this is a drive-through lane. People, don't try to jump that curb and jump in when there's no cars there. You know, I just, it's just, they wouldn't jump, really, you know? People aren't that stupid, but, well. Anyway, I would, you know, again, you've got a lot of asphalt here. I think taking out one row, one side of that, the parking, and then making that barrier between the drive-through and the rest of the parking lot wider, it would really enhance the project. It's going to be a little more costly, but it's going to, it's going to provide that, I think, the look we want in Troy is a lot of green and safety, of course, big time. And that may help solve both of those.
Ms. Perakis?
Yes.
I would just add, since I haven't said anything, I mean, the trees in the lot, I support. And I guess, and I hear the comment about staff looking at it and looking at the circulation, but I think we've had a lot of discussion here, and I don't understand how the circulation works. So I'd just like to see that and better understand all those points of conflict that we've raised, all those concerns that we've raised, how they can get addressed.
I would agree with that. I mean, I think that it would be helpful to see an entire plan with the parking lot at large because it's part of a huge development and how people within the entire plaza are going to be accessing the business. I think that's reasonable, and it is one of the requirements of the special use standards in 9.03A3 under traffic impact. You have to take into consideration pedestrian access and safety, access location design, circulation, parking design. All of that plays a role into it, and I just don't feel like we've satisfied that tonight. Yep, Mr. Fox?
Well, it sounds like in general, the commission's leaning towards some type of postponement. So along that line is, my understanding is that it's always good that we give the applicant very clear instructions of what we're looking for. So to make sure that I understand everything correctly, provide maybe a larger context circulation plan, one that kind of shows... We've seen them, like, actual circulation plans where they've got like lines drawn and all that. Is that like a, like, is that referred to as a circulation plan? Just make sure I'm citing it properly.
Basically, yes.
Okay. Provide a circulation plan, provide a plan for including the ten trees and then also the photometric plan that staff mentioned in their report. Is there anything else? Mr. Lambert?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Some kind of enhancement of the pedestrian crossings.
Signage?
Yeah, and signage.
And maybe just to check out other options about the dumpster still.
I guess on that topic, I will make a motion. Mouse stopped working. Lovely. All right. Resolve that, I would like to make a motion. Resolve that special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed Starbucks with drive-through north side of Big Beaver, west of John R., 1735 East Big Beaver, Section 23, currently zoned CB, be postponed, subject to the following. Applicant provide a photometric plan pursuant to staff's request. Applicant provide a larger context circulation plan. Applicant explore options with the dumpster. Applicant provide a pedestrian safety improvements. And then applicant propose a plan for complying with the parking lot tree ordinance.
I'd second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Lambert?
Just one discussion, not necessarily to the proposed postponement, but maybe some information before it comes back to us from city staff or from the planning consultant on the ideas for how to handle that entrance into the drive-through lanes.
Ten-four.
I think we're ready for the vote.
Ms. Perakis?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimously postponed. We're going to move on to the preliminary site plan approval, JPLN 2023-0028, proposed John R. Commons Townhome Development, west side of John R., north of Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-23-476-017, Section 23 zoned multifamily residential zoning district. Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, thank you. Tonight before you is proposed John R. Townhomes. This, I believe, is the third time, second time, the new application, third time, I think, overall with regards to this application. Proposed residential project located on the east side of John R., just north of Big Beaver. I think we're very familiar with the, with the general area of this, of this project. The subject site is 12 acres. The site is currently vacant and used as part of a stormwater detention. The site is one parcel and there are no existing structures on the site. The applicant proposes a multifamily proposed development. It's 118 units and 20 buildings. It's a permitted use in the MF multifamily district. And we note there are two points of ASIC. One is off Nancy Bostic Drive, and the second one is through Detroit Sports Complex. Those arrows are arrows of access to the development. The application was last reviewed by the planning commission on January 23 of 2024. After lengthy discussion, it was postponed to allow the applicant to address the following comments. First, with regards to landscape buffer on the south side development. Second, enhance landscaping within the development. Three, look and enhance pedestrian amenities. Four, consider vehicular access at the southwest corner. Five, add additional recreational amenities. And six, consider saving additional trees in the north, it was in northeast corner, northwest corner of the site. With regards to changes since the planning commission last reviewed it, the applicant has added 26 trees along the northern property line, I can see it right here, of the Troy Sports Complex. Again, they're owned by the same ownership. And this supplements the existing double rows of tree they already have proposed along the south side of their development. So it's a, it's a very robust landscape buffer between these two properties. In addition, they've added interior landscaping trees along the internal sidewalks, trees within the courtyards. These are courtyards, trees within the courtyards, as well as a significant amount of trees along the detention basin. In reviewing the trees in our analysis, they, the number of trees greatly exceeds the ordinance requirements for what is required with regards to landscaping. Pedestrian amenities, the applicant is providing a complete pedestrian, it's a little bit hard to see here, but a complete pedestrian system within the development with sidewalks and striping, as well as pedestrian amenities around into the, around the detention pond and into John R., as well as pedestrian connection here to get into the Troy Sports Arena. With regards to vehicular access to the southeast entrance, this was a lengthy discussion and the applicant actually did have the discussion with our traffic consultant with regards to the best location. The applicant is proposing a location across access at this location. They are adding stop sign at the development as well as speed limit signs and slow markings along this section of the roadway adjacent to this Troy Sports Complex to reduce and slow traffic in this particular area. With regards to recreational amenities, they're adding, they've added two outdoor areas in this corner of the development. These include outdoor seating, a fire pit and landscaping. They've added a dog park in this location, as well as, again, noted, internal sidewalks. The applicant did look, there was a, a cluster of trees that applicant was asked to look at this particular location. The applicant went back and looked at that. However, they were not able to save any additional trees. But again, they do comply with the mitigation requirements and they actually greatly exceed the landscape ordinance requirements. These are proposed renderings of the two types of buildings, are one of the types of buildings. And these are 3D renderings provided by the applicant. We received these late this afternoon, so they were unfortunately not in your packet, but they are here in front of you right now. This is looking at the site, this is Nancy Bostic Drive, so this is looking at the site, this is John R., the detention pond. So this is the Troy Sports Arena, there's the landscape buffer that I noted. This is another rendering. I couldn't quite figure out where this was located on the site, but this is another rendering. We're rendering, showing a little more detail internally of the street pattern and pedestrian amenities. This is the outdoor, one of the outdoor amenity areas. This is the courtyard with a number of trees in the courtyard. More detailed view of the outdoor seating area. And a cross-section of the landscaping within the courtyard and some of the sidewalks. Again, site planner review standards for the planning commission to consider. And we're asking the planning commission to consider development and confirm if the site plan standards have been met. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone have any questions for the planning department at this time? Yeah, Mr. Lambert?
Just a quick question. The entrance at the southwest side of the site, is that essentially there for fire department access? It's not necessarily something that we would require other than that emergency access point?
It's a, it's a full access point, Mr. Lambert.
I mean, as far as beyond that, though, is it necessary beyond public access or public safety? I'm asking about whether or not it would be, I don't know what the commission feels, but if we were to go back to making that into an EVA, is that a possibility there?
Certainly a possibility. Again, Brent and I, sorry, Director Savadon and I are not traffic experts. However, the general rule of thumb is more points of access to a development disperses traffic patterns and makes it usually a safer environment. I know the planning has spent a lot of time on this point of second access. I think the planning commission was somewhat split. There are a few members that were strongly wanted a full access for resident entrance and exit. Certainly, it really is of the discretion of the planning commission, but I know that they had, they had put as a full access based on what they had heard from the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Beekner.
I know, I know you said some of this, Ben, but what exactly changed since January?
Generally, the site layout stayed the same. There's really been no change to the site layout. Access points really have remained the same. They've enhanced the access point here from a safety standpoint with additional signage and stop bars, et cetera, as well as they've added an additional, one additional outdoor amenity area and added a significant amount of landscaping. I mean, they put more trees on here than I... I mean, they put more trees on here than I seen in any application we've seen. But in terms of the road structure, the location of the buildings, those have all stayed the same, and they've additional pride from additional details with regards to the architecture proposed.
Mr. Fox?
Please correct me if I'm wrong, but it is also my understanding that trees kind of serve a dual purpose, where they're beautiful, they're green, but they also serve as traffic mitigation, where they encourage slower driving speeds. So the increase in trees is also a very useful traffic mitigation.
They are, I can't, yeah, I can't really see it, but yeah, I mean, the trees closer to the edge of the roadways, you know, you want to say far enough you're not going to cause a traffic issue, but yes, just the sense of enclosure typically slows cars down internally in a road network such as this, so.
Yeah, my thought with that back, then all the trees along the screening wall is that people shooting by behind us, that should slow that down hypothetically, so.
I'd like to point out that, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about traffic studies, and whenever there's a new development, especially like with multifamily, where we're getting many cars, we talk about how many trip generations going in and out. And I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around it again, because here we are, and we have 118 units, so we're over 200 cars parked. And one of the egresses, one of the places for the people, the residents to live there, are spitting out into a parking lot that's nowhere near Big Beaver or John R. So I don't know how we just kind of gloss over it without getting those cars out onto Big Beaver or John R. safely. And that is going to be the sticking point for me tonight. I still don't see it, nothing's changed, and I don't believe it's safe. But anyway, why don't we invite the applicant up?
Good evening. Greg Bono with PEA, also 1849 Pound Run, Auburn Hills.
And I'm back.
Again, Brian Neuper, architect.
Thank you. Thanks, Ben, for rolling out the red carpet for us there. We, I think we felt a lot more proud about the overall look and feel here. He's pointed out a lot about the landscaping. Toby, to answer your question, with some of the additional changes, we proposed a landscape boulder wall that's visible from John R., just kind of presents more of a kind of grander kind of look to the overall development. We increased our primary entrance there off of Nancy Bostic Drive to be a boulevard entrance with monument sign located in the middle. We added some additional benches around the detention area. And we also added some pedestrian connectivity, which came through some internal conversation with the Planning Department as well for, there's a dead end at Floyd Street there where they felt it was appropriate, because there's an elementary school in the neighborhood behind there that any, you know, kids needing to walk to school could utilize that as an access point. So we gladly accommodated that request, so. With regards to the traffic situation, so, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying about, you know, how traffic is going to occur there. You know, we're, we have a 24-foot wide, you know, drive that's connecting to a 24-foot wide, two-way drive aisle. And granted, it's in a parking lot, but it's designed to accommodate, you know, two-way traffic. I mean, and, you know, it's not a road, but it's a clearly defined access point that can convey traffic around, just like you were saying, to the main entrance where they can then utilize the signal on Big Beaver. So, you know, I mean, when you start getting into trips and, you know, how many people are going to be going there at one time? Like, I don't envision, like, it's not going to be at 7:00 AM, there's going to be 50, whatever, 60 people going that way and 60 people going, it doesn't happen that well, you know, and I know you understand that, but to, just to kind of visualize, like, well, what's really going to happen there? I mean, you know, it's a perfectly functioning drive aisle that accommodates significant traffic when there's hockey tournaments and other functions, whereas parking lot is completely full. So we definitely agreed with your guys' recommendations about calming traffic through there. You know, I also took a drive-through there before I came here, and it was pretty busy, I was surprised for me. But even having all that parking taken up by cars, like, it visually makes you automatically want to slow down, because there's, you know, uncertainty if maybe somebody's getting out coming in. There were other families who were parking there whose kids were playing soccer in the San Marino field in the back, so, you know, little girls, soccer balls, trunk is open. So I think there's a lot of visual cues there that gives drivers, like, you know, the sense that they need to maneuver slowly through there. And through speed limits and, you know, striping on the pavement, you know, we provided a stop sign there to deliberately stop people, and it's not like you can just continue through. So we thought it through from that standpoint, and we were hoping that, you know, you guys thought that was a better situation, so. With that, I'm definitely happy to continue to answer any questions you guys have.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you walk me through how, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but I was there today as well, and I'm trying to figure out when you're heading south out of there towards Big Beaver, what is the path that you would take, the most direct route that the residents there would take to leave to get onto Big Beaver?
I think you explained it during the last presentation, and I don't know if you have our overall aerial plan. We included an overall site plan, the development in our package.
That one, right there.
Well, that's, okay.
If you're trying to get onto Big Beaver from the new grass area, which is your new condo complex, how do you go that way?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I came right down this way. I noticed what you were saying, this is one-way angled parking. So the logical thing I did was just came around and came right through here.
Yep. And if they wanted to go to the Starbucks line, they'd have to pass in front of the Starbucks?
I think they could turn left there.
There's two other drive aisle opportunities. I mean, if you, you know, there's a drive aisle here, a drive aisle here, and then this one down there. So realistically, as they were mentioning earlier, they could come around, come across.
Okay.
But that was not exactly.
No, I understand, okay. Does anyone, yep?
And this is more for Brent and Ben, but are there criteria from the city or the state or ordinances allowing to go past potentially 100, 200 parked cars to get to a road? There's no ordinance that says that's okay or not okay?
There's no ordinance that prohibits it. It is relatively unique, because it is providing secondary access to residential through commercial. I mean, it's not a scenario we see a lot of in Troy, but it is a scenario that you see more in more urban areas.
Mr. Faison?
We've seen several iterations of this. I thought, did we ever see something that calculated a trip generation from any version of this project?
Yeah, there was a memo in the last packet in January, that there was a memo from our traffic consultant that summarized the trips that were in and out of this development.
And it was satisfactory?
I was just going to finish.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Was that the one that talked about signalization at Nancy Bostic, potentially, if that was the one point of?
I believe so, yes.
So, okay.
I think I remember that, yeah.
Thank you. That's all.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Lambert?
First, appreciate all the enhancements you've made to the site. I think all of our concerns, for the most part, have been addressed. But my question is kind of a follow-up to, I asked city staff, Mr. Carlisle, do you have an objection if, and I don't know if the majority of the commission believes, agrees with me on this, but do you have an objection if that southwest entrance were to be made into an EVA entrance rather than a full automobile entrance?
I recall the memo you're speaking of last time. I don't have a copy in front of me, but I believe it mentioned that if that was an EVA, that that was going to, and that forced all of the development's traffic to exit off Nancy Bostic, that that might trigger some other traffic issues on John R. and possibly requiring a signal there, which is significant, you know, traffic improvement. So, you know, cross-access to Ben's, Brent's point earlier, I mean, that's always the solution to just disperse traffic, you know. I would, I mean, I'll let my client speak if he'd like, but I think from an engineering standpoint, I think that might not be the greatest idea.
I think it makes a lot more sense to have the extra access point. Otherwise, you're going to have, all the cars are going to go up, and like you just mentioned, they're going to bottle up at Nancy Bostic, and then they can go back through. It's a drive aisle there, so either you force them all through the complex, or they come out and they can go out to John R., John R. to Big Beaver, or they can go around the building and come out on the stoplight on Big Beaver. I don't think it would accomplish a lot to not have that, but we could do it.
The other thought would be, if we don't make it, if they don't make it an EVA, but when you exit, you force a left, and they only can go behind the building and then join up, but they would still be limited to John R., or they would cut through the Kroger and get back, jog around and exit on Big Beaver.
I'm sorry, it's, actually, it's a good opportunity. While we own all of that, if we were to sell that residential, the multi-op to somebody else, they wouldn't necessarily have access to our site. And good planning, I think, would want to have access through there. But in the event that we did sell it, they would only have the Nancy Bostic, that's a public roadway up to that point of the entrance, and I guess people would still maybe cross through our property if we were separate owners, but we might as well accommodate it. Now, well, we do own it all.
Well, so that brings a question for me for the Planning Department. So if we were to approve this, and then they were to sell the residential piece, they don't have to provide that egress out into the rest of it? Because it wouldn't be part of the?
We would look at, respectfully, I disagree with Mr. Bostic. We would look at the vehicular cross-access as a condition of site plan approval that was placed by the Planning Commission as a condition of approval. So if it were to be sold, we would require a vehicular cross-access between the two properties.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Yes, Mr. Beekner?
And I will say, these six things we asked you guys to do, you did just about all of them, so congratulations to that. The fact that there aren't any residents here disagreeing is a plus for me. Ultimately, this question is for you guys. You need to think about, I know you've thought about this, but cutting through the parking lot to have half of your customers go by your other customers, and I think most of us in the building are parents, and your baby or your grandbaby's walking through there, and you've got people running to work, going through Smash Burger and zigging and zagging, and first entrance, the second entrance, the other entrance, like, going the wrong way, down the one way. I mean, I've walked my babies into that place a million times, and if you're asking for another, however many people are coming through there, if you, you guys are ultimately, you've got an owner and you've got people designing it, but you guys get to live with it if someone gets hit. It would be on our us as well, which I'm not excited about, but, I mean, do you guys really feel good about the safety?
I do, because you even just said it, you've walked your babies in there. You don't dump your babies out and say, go for it. Unlike at a school, unlike a school where mom and dad let them off and they go, you know, they don't walk them into the school, they're out with all the traffic. But in our facility, it's, the parents come in, they walk with them, they have heavy, you know, their bags with all their equipment, and we've never ever, I think I was asked that question before, ever had an accident out there? Never, in 26 years.
Good job, okay.
I mean, you know, I'd also just venture to say that development as a whole, I mean, how many vehicles that it can accommodate currently? And then we start talking about an extra 100 and some, I mean, it kind of gets watered down by the overall traffic that's existing there, you know? I mean, it's the existing traffic that's already utilizing the exit off of Big Beaver from all those existing businesses, and what additional percentage of that is going to be, you know, resident traffic? And is the timing of that going to be different? You know, and maybe in the morning and the evenings is different than during the day for those other businesses, so there's a lot, so a lot of that, it gets kind of washed out in some of the statistics. I'm not claiming to be a traffic engineer either, and I know it was in a, you know, formal study, but, you know, there's a lot of those things that we just kind of generally understand, you know? We've done this a bunch of times, but.
Okay, I guess if we don't have any other questions for the applicant, we'll let you take your seat and we'll turn back. It's not a public hearing, but we usually do open it up for public comment if anyone's here who wanted to speak on this, who's in the audience tonight.
I'm sorry, I'm shy, I'm supposed to sign in.
Yeah, go ahead and sign in, thank you. Unless you already signed in. Okay, so I guess nobody's coming up? All right, so let's turn it back to the Planning Commission. Yes, Mr. Fox?
While we were having this conversation, I actually thought of another prop development in Troy that I am aware of that does have an entrance that goes out to a parking lot, specifically behind the PetSmart at Rochester and Big Beaver. There is a row of apartments between 75 and the shopping center there. It has two entrances. One is off of Rochester. You make a right turn after, like, it's the first right turn after the Commercial Plaza. It's like you go directly behind there. And then the other one is a parking lot, goes out into that parking lot area with PetSmart. I have a friend who's lived in that complex for about a year, and they did, in fact, get into a car accident, but it was on the Rochester exit. It wasn't in the parking lot. They were turning right, and they got rear-ended by somebody who was speeding up to get onto the freeway. So I guess, on the topic of safety, my understanding is that he only uses the parking lot exit now, ever since he went through that car accident there at the Rochester one. Now, again, it's different but similar, I guess I'm just bringing it up as kind of a point of reference. My personal thought is that bottlenecking everything to the one road there on Nancy Bostic, that's going to, to me, that's going to create a lot backup. You know, I've already seen it back up a bit when people are trying to turn left just to, you know, leave Kroger and go north on John R. I can't imagine if every single person from the entire unit was being funneled that direction. I do think the applicant has done a lot to, like, with the slow markings along the west side of the sports center that they're installing, as well as the trees themselves kind of serving as a, specifically, I'm picturing someone who like goes left and shoots behind, or driving behind the building trying to go to Nancy Bostic. You know, hypothetically, the trees are slowing that traffic down, as well as the tall building to the right, kind of creating that enclosed feeling that was alluded to earlier that leads to slower traffic volumes. So they really, they addressed a lot of the concerns that I had after last time, added green outdoor amenities. So with me, I personally like it the way that it is, but I'm just one.
Yep, Mr. Tagle? Yeah, Mr. Tagel?
You know, I'm struggling with this whole circulation, this project, the last project. And, you know, we talk about bottleneck, if we are going to have the one exit onto John R., and the thing that would solve that is a traffic signal. It would be timed, people would be able to come in and go out with a reasonable pace or... And so I, you know, I'm just not so sure. I know there's an aspect of dilution when people come out, and they'll go anywhere they want to go to get to a point. I take this aisle, I drive to the next aisle, and to me, that's bordering on a little bit chaotic, depending on how many cars are doing this, how full is a parking lot? So I guess, back to what we said in the previous petition, with the previous petitioner, I'd like to see more of an overall view of how this property is gonna be designed to more create the paths of ingress and egress, as opposed to just kind of, oh, there's this route, or there's that route. It just, to me, it doesn't seem like it's been solidified, to my satisfaction anyways, to, or understanding. And I really think that one of the big keys to this, and I understand there's certainly a financial burden, but I think a traffic signal, because I don't frequent this shopping center a lot, but I have, and getting out of that John R. exit, wanting to go north is very difficult at times, you know? And so I'm really thinking that a traffic signal there would certainly even enhance the current situation, let alone adding the number of units that we're talking about in this development.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn.
Yep. Let's go, Ken.
Yeah, I side with what John's saying. You know, Troy's a real quality city, and we should always present, and when we do our planning, the best quality solution. And just because there's another situation where housing goes through a parking lot, that doesn't set a precedent to me. This idea of going through a parking lot, and it's not a straight path, it's a circuitous. You gotta, you gotta turn here and turn there and end up going, I think it's, it's just not quality planning. And I want to keep Troy at a level that anybody from anywhere in the world, coming from any major area, or major metropolitan area, would come in and say, "This is really nice. This makes sense. I can easily figure out, even if I've never been here, I can figure out how to get in and out." This solution that I see here doesn't do it. What John Tagel said, I would side with that solution, a traffic signal. And again, like you said, it doesn't just help the housing situation, helps all the people in that shopping area, too. Second point is, I sent to everyone through our planning department, a project in Northville, Northville Downs, and I think our planning consultant had something to do with that project? Yes or no?
Yes.
I saw your name on it, so I figured it was. And the point I'm getting at is, there was a great variety of architecture, and some beautifully designed architecture, beautiful brickwork, really nice relief ins and outs with the various facades. What I see here is more, more like I would see on a college campus as far as housing dormitories. They don't look, they don't look like quality Troy. I want to keep that high-end look to the city, so we continue to attract and retain our, we have no problem now, obviously, but I want to continue to develop Troy as the highest-end product we can. And the quality of the architectural design lacks that quality to me. So I would, although I didn't mention it a lot earlier with our discussion with this client or this applicant, I really think they should look at what's happening at Northville Downs, take a look at their website, and look at the housing variety there, and the quality of their housing. This, this is just a rubber stamp over and over and over and over again. Like I said last time, it looks like a, if you've ever seen a circuit board on a computer, that's what this looks like. It's just one after another, all in a nice row. It just doesn't have that high-end look.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to say anything? Yeah, Mr. Tagel?
I thank you for bringing it up. I looked at the buildings, and I was more drifted into the circulation, but I agree with what you said. This, I don't even know what materials, they're talking about vertical and horizontal siding, but I don't know if they're talking about vinyl siding or cement fiberboard, but I agree with you. I think the presentation and the quality of the materials and the detailing and the designs certainly could be upgraded, and really make this, make this development stand out as, as I think it should and could. So thank you for raising that.
Mr. Fox?
Maybe the planning office could provide me a little bit of background on this. I'm just thinking of kind of dense, like, a lot of commercial lot going on, properties in the city. I don't want to say downtown Troy, but, come by the Trion Building, that whole development. When that was being developed, was there kind of like, I almost want to say like a circulation map covering the entire, like, helping the whole concept flow together so that you can kind of see circulation as it all kind of flowed out? If that makes sense?
Is your question, was there a circulation plan that was submitted?
Yeah, I guess as a part of that whole development and the multiple stages that it went through, some kind of clear, like, this is how circulation's gonna work, this is how this existing is gonna tie in with this new thing that we're building, and I'm thinking something that covers more of like several parcels instead of a single parcel.
I don't know if there was a circulation plan per se. The development itself, there was a, there was a building and a parking deck on the, on the site with some attached restaurants, and they submitted a concept plan that received one site plan approval from the planning commission, and then the, then the outlots and the parking deck and apartments were approved. I don't know if there was a circulation plan per se, because they inherited, kind of inherited a layout with access points. It had been there a long time as it was.
Oh, okay, okay. Because where I'm at with the western entrance is that honestly, entrance or EVA, I would prefer it to be an entrance, but even if it's an EVA, it's gonna achieve, like, walkability. It's gonna achieve, like, connection between the apartments to the north and the rest of the lots. So really, if that ends up as an EVA, if it doesn't end up as an EVA, you know, I like it, I just would like to understand that in the context, again, of a circulation map or something like that.
I'm glad that you brought that development up at Crooks and Big Beaver, because I was actually just talking about that intersection. I think, I mean, I'll only speak for myself and not the rest of Troy, but from comments that I've heard from residents, people love that area, but they also hate it, because it's very difficult to navigate in there, because you drive in and you're going from parking lot to parking lot, and you might be parked here when you want to go there, and it's not very well thought out, because it was, I think it was backed into, sort of. You know, it was inherited, and they worked with what they had, and they did a great job, and I think a lot of people love it, so I'm not criticizing it. But I think here's an opportunity where, you know, I don't mean this as an insult, but that parking lot is not in, it's kind of in disrepair. I think there's a lot that could be done to improve that area, the look of it, and so I think this is just a great opportunity to reimagine that entire space and make sure, at a minimum, that the circulation works for the whole complex together, and invites the residents who are gonna be moving in with the walkability and everything. But from where we sit, safety's really important. I'm not convinced, I have major concerns about the circulation, and so basically, I mean, I think it's been said several times, but... Yeah, go ahead.
I just thought maybe I would add that, you know, since you guys did just postpone the previous application, which is by my same, the same ownership, that maybe, just as you're considering your resolution, maybe the resolution of the traffic circulation on that can be accommodated through whatever revisions to their site plan they make. And if we're, if we're okay with the access points, then presumably, we could approve the multifamily development, and then you can work through the traffic issues with the Starbucks traffic patterns. I just thought I could throw that out there as a, you know, something to consider.
Thank you.
Can I ask him what he thinks of the traffic signal? What do you think of the traffic signal idea?
I don't personally like traffic signals. I would choose to enter or exit where there isn't one, because I don't want to sit there and wait. I actually did that. When I went there, you know, I could have turned left right there at Big Beaver. I went to the second turnaround, just swooped right into the access point next to Walgreens instead of waiting. I don't know, that's just, everybody kind of has their own personal, some people may be nervous about crossing a three-lane, you know, boulevarded street, so they might want a traffic signal so they can wait for a green light, so they know, okay, I can go.
That left turn's gonna be tough on a John R., right?
I mean, I don't know how significantly, you know, different it would be than it is right now with a grocery store there, you know? And it all depends on peak times of traffic.
Yep.
So, you know, I know, because we did the luxury apartments with the 270 units, you know, some years back, that was analyzed at length, and I believe even at that time, the road commission had suggested that a traffic signal wasn't warranted based on. It was still even debatable, even at that density of a development, so us coming back in here now with only 118 units, we felt a lot more comfortable about the trips being generated based on that, so...
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Savadat?
Just some thought here. Mixed use is a, is something that's sought in planning, generally speaking, mixed use is a good thing. True mixed use involves residential, and we're, we're seeing more and more mixed use developments in the city, but we've had some mixed use developments over the last, you know, dating back, before I started here, 22 years ago. We've got Maple and Coolidge, where the target is. We've got where Si Tai is, the Kilmer PUD, that literally share drives. The last planning commission, the Waddle Square Apartments shares drives with the Ray Day property. We've got Caswell PUD at Rochester and South where they share drives. The Zen Apartments, they're not attached units per se, they're a part, vertical units attached to a parking deck, but that's mixed use. We've got the apartments on, just not too far from this site, go a little bit further east on Big Beaver, there's four apartment buildings with a commercial component in one of the buildings. My point is, is we're gonna see more of this, and I, what I'm hearing, the planning commission, I think is absolutely valid, is this relationship between the residential with the commercial, and we need to look at circulation. I hesitate to talk, to talk about traffic signals, because we don't, we, Ben and I, planning commission, we don't make those decisions that's based on science, it's gotta be warranted, and it's gotta be properly located, designed, and et cetera, et cetera. We don't, we don't make those decisions, but I think, I think what we can do for this, I think I know where the planning commission's going with this, and I, I think what we can do, we staff, is we can sit down with, with the applicant and their engineers, and our, their traffic people, our traffic people, we can roll up our sleeves and we can look at this scientifically and decide, you know, what are we, what exactly are we gonna do with that western ingress egress? What should it be, and how should it relate to the Starbucks and to the rest of the site, and what improvements can we make so that it works better? But I, I don't know what it is about this particular development that, that raises the hackles of a lot of planning commissions. I'm trying to put my finger on it. I think maybe it's the number of units, you know, 118 seems like a lot of units. It was 247 when it was a conditional zoning, so it's less than half of what it was, but I'm hearing what you're saying about, about the connect, the connectivity and the circulation. I think we need to take one last stab at this, because mixed use and cross-access is generally a good thing.
Thank you for that. You know, you're, you're trying to put your finger on it. I can just tell you, for me, I think what it is, is it's not just cutting through like a 7-Eleven. It's a very large distance to Big Beaver from that access point, and it's not a straight shot. It's, I'm not even gonna try to say that word. It's not a straight shot. So that's what it is for me. It's a, it's a far distance, and it's racing through a parking lot is how I see it. Yes, Mr. Fazer?
And what I would add is, what you just articulated, Brent, that's exactly what I would like to see, like, so that we can make a fact-based decision on the project in the context of the whole project, right, or the whole site. So that would be great. And I agree with you in terms of, well, of course, you're right, in terms of mixed use and that shared access, so...
Well, and there was value in discussing both projects at the same meeting. We talked to the chair about that, and we agreed that it was a good idea, but I think that, that connect, the connection between the two, maybe, maybe there needed to be an overall site plan drawing that, that more clearly showed that relationship.
Yes, Mr. Tagel?
You know, I'll go out on a limb here, because I don't know how this corner was developed, but when I look at that site plan, it doesn't look like there was a master plan ever done, and say, "This is how we're gonna develop this property. We're gonna, there's gonna be a building here a few years later. Oh, we have an opportunity to put a building here." It's just, it's not a cohesive plan, and I think that adds to the complexity of what we're talking about here as far as vehicular and pedestrian circulation. I mean, there are backsides of buildings alongside sides of buildings, and there's delivery areas next to parking, I mean, it just wasn't looked at in the whole, in the totality of the whole. So I think, like, again, for me, looking at this, I, like everyone else has said, I think we need to step back, take a look at it with what we've got to work with, and what's the best we can come up with to make this a safe and compatible for all mixed, the residents and the commercial uses.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that's exactly also what I'm thinking, you know, let's not add to the chaos, let's take this time to see if we can make an improvement to the entire complex, because exactly how you said it, I mean, there's deliveries next, I mean, you can see how the buildings are staggered, and there's a lot of chaos. Okay. Mr. Beakner first.
First meeting I can think of where my friend, Mr. Hudson, didn't say anything. I was curious, I was curious what your thoughts are at the moment.
Well, I'll tell ya. I think we have a basic problem that we're probably not going to be able to cure, and that's at least in this site. You know, we started out with a hockey rink, and it was almost, come and pick and choose, but no cohesiveness in planning this whole operation. Now, I think our problem is, and I agree with the concept of taking it as a whole and not piecework, but you've got an existing hodgepodge on Big Beaver and John R., and then you've got a straight, thick ruler being proposed on the northern portion. You know, it's like frickin' Frank. I mean, they don't even talk to one another. And Mr. Bostic spent a lot of time and effort into this, with a lot of goodwill, and I can see he's just sort of eroding as I'm speaking and he's hearing us. But I think we still may have a chance at making it work, but it's gonna take some work and some time.
Thank you. Mr. Fox?
Goodness, sorry, that last bit from Mr. Hudson. So one thing that I wanted to touch on was, oh, I wanted to make sure that Mr. Krenth's point was kind of thoroughly discussed by the whole commission, just in terms of design, because I want to make sure the developer kind of knows, like, what the commission's general thoughts are in terms of, like, the design aspect, because I know we've talked circulation round and round in circles, no pun intended, but there was also a point made about design, and the Northville Downs was brought up, so I want to make sure we touch on that. So, I'm not sure, it wasn't my, wasn't my point. I wanted to give Mr. Krenth the Florida, maybe hit on it again. I wanted to give Mr. Krenz the floor to maybe hit on it again.
Well, I think I made my point. The thing is, it comes back to quality architecture, and this doesn't cut it for me for quality architecture. It's, it just, you know, that's just what it is. You can compare this with other apartments we have in Troy. Let's say the Regent's Club. That's some nice brickwork, elegant architecture. There's other ones in Troy like that, and this just doesn't, doesn't shape up to that kind of a level visually at all.
I'm going to just give a different perspective. I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we've had these conversations on, you know, on planning commission before, but I don't know that I want the most expensive apartments at this location. I mean, I think that the idea is to provide affordable housing for all different people, whether it's empty nesters trying to downsize, or new families trying to move in, or single people who have, you know, have their first jobs. We've had these conversations before, so I don't want to send them, my personal opinion is, I don't want to send the message to this developer that come back and bring us something that you're going to sell for, I mean, I don't even know if we're renting these or selling them or what we're doing, but we have plenty of options for people who want to spend half a million dollars and upwards. So, I think that, you know, this area, the mixed use idea, I was under the impression that we were catering towards the missing middle that we've been talking about filling.
Yeah, to provide some clarification, I was interested on getting the pulse of the commission as a whole, I almost said council, commission as a whole on the topic of design. As personally, and I feel like I've said this before, design, I'm not a design expert in any way, shape, or form, but I do, when I hear like conversations about improving the design, I immediately think of conversations that I've had with the planning department, with other folks I know who are interested in planning, where, you know, the more you mandate, that's just ticking the price up and up and up and up, you know, whether, so there's a balance to be struck for sure. Am I saying that these builds are perfect? No. There's absolutely a balance to be struck, so I would also caution just saying, attempting to keep them more on the affordable end of the spectrum would be helpful, in my opinion.
Mr. Tagle?
I do not want to undermine quality design. That's important, and it doesn't have to be the most expensive building on the block. There's creative ways to do it. If you look at the ordinance, the ordinance lays out some specific things that enhance design, that are foundational to good design. I think that's, for me, I won't speak for Tom, but for me, that's what we're talking about here. I, you know, again, I won't get into picking apart some of these drawings that I'm looking at, but it's, I mean, it's really basic, basic stuff, and I'm not, I'm not against the missing middle, I'm not against good, good quality design and affordable prices, but I just, you know, I didn't see the quality of what I'd like to see in the architecture in the presentation of these buildings. Now, Tom, I appreciate the Northfield Downs, I thought that was a beautiful elevation or rendering. You know, maybe that's a little higher end than this has to be. However, there are ways that I think design can be enhanced without breaking the bank. So, I just want to go on the record, design is important.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with you. I think creativity and design is very important, but, you know, the word high-end was used, and that's what I was just saying. I don't want that to go hand in hand, because I would hope you would agree with me that you can build a quality product that's affordable.
I know you can.
So, there we go. So, I think we agree. But yeah, I just didn't want to use the word high-end and then talk about the Regents and that, because I don't think we have to do that. Okay. Does anyone want to? Does anyone have a resolution, or is there more discussion?
Just like we have recently, clearly framing the resolution so that it's, provides solid direction to the applicant and to the planning commission would be good.
Well, so I guess on that topic of solid direction, I don't know if we've really, I guess, do we just ask generally for a site circulation plan and let the applicant decide if that western exit is going to be an EVA or an access? I mean, I'm of the opinion that it should be an access. I don't know if there's a consensus among us, though, on whether or not it should be an access or an EVA. So, maybe we just leave that up to the applicant, and then the resolution direction is more vague and say, hey, provide us with a circulation plan that covers the whole corner, or something to that extent.
I thought that we would, Mr. Savadat had sort of proposed working closely with the applicant to come up with a solution. I don't want to pigeonhole them and tell them that we want them to do one thing or the other. We're open to whatever they come up with, would be mine.
Again, I've got a footnote. I hate to have a resolution focusing on exits or entrances. I very much savor Mr. Tagle's thoughts on design and paying attention to concept. That's important, and I also think it's important to try and figure out some way to blend this hunk of clay that nobody has formed yet, so it's compatible with the existing shopping center. So, I guess what I'm saying is, don't concentrate on entrances. Look down that to the whole project as a whole with conceptual ideas.
Mr. Fox?
So, I'd like to offer a motion, but just to make sure before I start throwing words out there, circulation, design, anything else? Anything else I'm missing? Okay, cool. Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed John R. Gardens Town Home Development located on the east side of John R., north of Big Beaver, Section 23, Zoned MF Multifamily Residential District, be postponed, subject to the applicant revisiting circulation with the planning office and the applicant reevaluating the design of the architecture on the site. Cool.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Krenz, thank you.
I've learned to pause after my motions to let somebody...
Any discussion, or are we ready for the vote? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Mr. Krenz?
Yes.
Ms. Procas?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, so that unanimously passed as a postponement. We'll move on to public comment for items that are on the agenda. If anyone has anything left they'd like to say on this topic? Yep, go ahead, come on up.
You guys were talking about the Starbucks and these trees, like, I know we weren't talking about like horse trading before, but like, we're proposing significant additional landscaping here, 26 additional ornamental trees on the sports center property alone. So, for retail, the most important thing is visibility from the road. You get, there's already existing trees there that are very mature on Big Beaver. I mean, there's nothing more I hate worse than if I've got my map up and I'm like, it says there's supposed to be a Starbucks around here somewhere, but you can't see it, because there's landscaping just blocking everything. I know you guys have a valid thing about landscaping, and well-maintained landscaping is definitely beautiful, but when it comes to on the main road, on a main corridor where there's retail and drivers need to visually see destinations, like, I'd be a little cautious about making people just add more trees, because it looks like there's a little spot right there you could put two more in, if you know what I'm saying. So, I just, I heard that in the last one, I didn't want to, you know, say anything, but, you know, it's death to retail. I did Kohl's Department Stores, I traveled all over like the eastern half of the United States, Virginia, Pennsylvania, they have very extensive landscape ordinances, but even in some of these malls, they would want to be an anchor on a mall, and you're like, well, where's the mall at? And then, it's not until you wind through this boulevard and all these trees, it's like, okay, there's the mall. Like, it's just, and guess what? Half the mall is empty. So, I just, you know, I'm rambling, I think, no, but...
No, that's okay, thank you. You know, I'll just, I'll just comment back and say, I don't know that we're looking for you to load up Big Beaver with trees, but anyone who's building something new now, there's, any new parking lot or parking lot that's going to be enhanced is going to have to add trees to them, and so when you're rethinking this whole circulation plan, that's where I would think about it. Maybe that unnamed street is boulevarded with trees, whatever you guys come up with. But, yeah, I don't think we're looking for you to block Starbucks signage on Big Beaver with a thick layer of trees.
There's not a lot of frontage there?
No, I get it, I get it.
To be short-ten already, I don't know, it just seems like it's way too much. Sorry, you...
Mr. Krenz mentioned something that I was thinking about behind it, where that nose is, if you make it wider, then you'd create a tree buffer, which would make it safer for the people to not stand in a few inches of safety. They'd have 10 feet of safety, maybe, I don't know what the number is, but you'd have some opportunities to space it and have some trees and have a buffer and make it safer, and he's still my ideal.
I mean, if there's other changes to this...
Thanks for reinforcing it.
Yeah, if there's other changes to the site that gives an opportunity to add those trees in, then by all means, and if they're in the rear, you know, nobody's going to be upset about that.
All right, thank you. Thanks. Anyone else? All right, I guess we're going to move on to planning commission comment. We'll start with you. Nope, okay, Mr. Fox?
No.
Good. Mr. Hudson?
Just a thought that we spent a couple hours tonight talking about sort of design and comprehensive planning, and we just spent three years on a master plan with all sorts of ideas, and no one seemed to touch on that master plan may have some importance with what we're doing here. I'm doing...
Mr. Faison?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Lambert?
Just welcome Mr. Bostic to tonight's meeting, and I guess he'll be filling in for Mr. Frang two weeks from today.
That is correct, and I'd like to say that whenever, there's no legal questions to this meeting.
Mr. Krenz?
Well, the only thing I'll comment on is, we reviewed a development on, is it Crooks and Long Lake, the, it was a major offices and, yeah, in the northwest corner, and that took a lot of iterations, but we finally came up with a layout of the whole thing that was somewhat cohesive. I would like to see this corner have that same kind of attention, so we can have something close to the cohesiveness we were able to provide for that other development, so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Tagle? Mr. Wester?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Savadat?
Really quick, I had the opportunity to tour Forum Flats, 295 Crooks. It was a office conversion. They started leasing units last, two weeks ago, and it's spectacular inside. You would never know, it just doesn't seem like it used to be an office, and now it's apartments. To give you an idea of some of the rents that they're asking for, there's a two-bedroom unit on the first floor, lots of glass, and I believe the rents were $23.50. There was on the second or third floor, the largest units, two-bedroom, very, very large, open space, big kitchen. It was $29.95, I think. So, you know, they're up there, but people are leasing, they're doing, they're doing really, really well.
Brent, you said Crooks, is that Crooks or is that Curse?
Kurtz.
Yeah. The building looks great, yeah.
It's such a dramatic improvement, there's so much...
Absolutely, yeah.
The contractor said that they've spent over a million dollars just on glass, expanding the daylight in the building.
And that was fast.
Pretty fast.
Because I feel like we just saw it. Mr. Carlisle? Okay.
Well, I'm all satisfied, so we'll adjourn. Thank you.